...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. As far as roll call, all councilmen are present except for Councilman Fraylin. The Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall and is accessible to members of the public. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda submitted. Item B, receive in place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive in place on file, on file, all materials having bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August 5th, 2024, is on file with the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of the treasurer's reported claims in the amount of $742,868.46. Item F, approval of Boswell reported claims in the amount of $136,354.43. Approval write-off of ambulance bad debts. H, approval of pay request number 22 in the amount of $160,948.90 to 3FI Incorporated for the June 2022 hailstorm as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I, approval pay request number one in the amount of $95,444.10 to Hall Brothers, LLC for the asphalt sealing in various locations, 2024 project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of manager application for Deborah K. Murray, license number 126377, in connection with B&amp;G Hospitality LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn Express Beatrice, 4005 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item K, resolution number 7374, granting Charlie and Charlie Schilling and their designees permission to sell or offer of sale of pedal goods, wares, or merchandise upon the city property located in the tabernacle in Chautauqua Park on Saturday, September 28, 2024, as part of their Golden Ride Bike Fest event. Resolution number 7375, executing a letter agreement extending the Interlocal Cooperation Act agreement between the city and the county of Gage, Nebraska, for the purpose of providing ambulance services in certain areas of Gage County, Nebraska through to June 30, 2025. And M, resolution number 7376, entering into a hangar lease with Nebraska Dirt Works Incorporated for the purpose of leasing Hangar A2 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Anything anybody wants pulled from the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Moving on to the public hearings and bids, public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant known as CDBG for community and economic development activities for street improvements. The hearing is now open.
So, we're looking to apply to it for a CDBG Public Works grant. The last Public Works grant we applied for was the paving of Second Street between, would be Ella and Grant Street. That was the last Public Works project that we did. We've not been eligible for a while, or it's been difficult to get eligibility for a while. Recently, the HUD just updated their low and moderate income calculations, and the city of Beatrice now is at 51.4% of our population is at low to moderate income according to HUD. That then qualifies you to meet one of the national objectives required for a Public Works grant. So, since we now meet those objectives, we're looking to apply for this grant. We're requesting $480,000. About $435,000 of that would go towards the actual street project. And what we have proposed is that we do street projects throughout the community. We have a number of mill and overlay projects in our community that we have budgeted in FY '25 and FY '26 that we're applying for here. So, we have got Grant Street, 14th to 16th, Paddock Street from Sumner to Weeby, Scott Street, 5th to 6th, Marlboro, 3rd to 5th, 10th Street from Court to Holbrook, and those would include ADA ramps. And so, if we're successful, again, our match would be about $413,530 would be our match, and those are street dollars that you have budgeted already between this year and next year for those mill and overlay projects. We did initially throw out about six different projects to send, looking to see what would kind of meet the requirements that the state's looking for, and the mill and overlay project was the one that they thought had the best chance of being funded. One of the things that required was it had to be residential in character. I know nobody's quite sure what that term means, but that's one that the state uses when looking at these types of projects, and so that's why we came back to this mill and overlay project.
So, so these are projects that we already intended to do and want to fix your road plan. Do you have, and we had budgeted for them, and we had the money for them, or you were waiting for this grant?
No, we have these, these projects are budgeted for in FY '25 and then again FY '26. So, you already had funding for them lined up. If we're able to get them done, you basically get them for half price.
Okay, so then we take those monies and put them on additional street projects?
Correct.
And we have time and space for that?
So, yes, you'd probably look at FY '26. FY '25 would just be where you'd spend your normal mill and overlay dollars, the freeze-up money, then in FY '26 to do a different project.
My question is if we could just expand the mill and overlay projects that we already had proposed since they would be here to do the work?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's an option. You could look to concrete something else. I mean, we've got a number of projects that we could bring back up to this body and-
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
I'm sorry. Are we only eligible for public utility stuff now? Or we opened the door for a lot of other things, maybe?
It opens the door for a lot of other projects. Just the CBG is the one that has a national objective, and one of the national objectives is blight some standards one, low and moderate incomes one. I think there's one more, and I don't remember off the top of my head which that one is. We usually don't go for that one.
Yep.
But the fact that you're low to moderate income allows you to pick projects throughout the community then, rather than before you, they had to pick one that was in a slum and blighted area, which is how we got Second Street.
Cool.
Or you had to go through and do a survey, an income survey, to try to prove that that neighborhood was low to moderate income.
Annually?
Yes. You can apply for grants annually.
Good.
Any other discussion needed up here from the public? Mr. McLean, let's close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:07 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Okay, move on to resolutions. We have a resolution tonight, resolution number 7377, entering into a local cooperation act agreement between the city and the county of Gage, Nebraska, for the purpose of the administration enforcement of the regulations of the Wellhead Protection District.
I move the resolution number 7377 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So, if you guys remember, we borrowed SRF funds from the state of Nebraska to do a number of different water projects. One of them was to purchase the additional acreage out by the current well field. As part of that, we had to do a wellhead protection plan, and so that's been done. You guys have adopted that. It's in place. The next step is to look for a wellhead protection area. We currently have one around our existing well field, and we're looking to expand it for the additional acres that we bought there. It ended up adding about 640 acres of additional area into that wellhead protection area. One of this, so we have to apply to the county for a special use permit. One of the requirements is we have to show a willingness to enter into an interlocal agreement. So, we presented one to them, but what better way to show a willingness to enter into an interlocal agreement than to bring to your, this body here? Hopefully you guys pass it tonight and show the willingness to enter into that as we move forward in our special use permit application through the county.
So, now that goes before the county board now?
At some point, it'll go before the county board.
And we have, when you guess somebody up there representing us, I'm sure, right? Taylor, somebody? Okay.
You know, one of the, one of the things that I think about is one of the things that we all have talked about for a long time. You know, when we make decisions, it's not just because we're doing it for the next five years. We're trying to look ahead for 20 years and maybe 50 years. And if you think about the fact that we bought that well so that our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren could have clean water, I can't think of probably anything more important on this agenda and actually in the county's agenda when 57% of the people who live in the county get water from our wells to protect that water from nitrates and anything else. I think about what we went through with the pipes and the study because of Flint, Michigan. I think about another few areas where there was some real heartache because of maybe an industry contaminated water. We aren't going to drill a well today. It's for the future of our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren. It won't affect me, but if I have somebody in generations to come that are living in this county, I certainly want them to have clean water. So, I certainly hope you'll vote yes for this interlocal agreement, and I certainly hope that, you know, others see how important clean water is to the city of Beatrice and those in Gage County that get our water.
Well said.
Yep, very good.
Any further discussion needed? If not, your vote, please. And that passes seven zero. All right, tonight we have an ordinance number 2424 conveying real estate owned by the city, owned by the city to MEI Homes LLC.
I move that ordinance number 24-24 be passed and approved.
Second.
All right, so after about a month, we're back to this ordinance we brought to you before. This is for the lot at 430 North Fish Street, which is the alleyway that goes into the post office, so that we had that little lot that there. If you guys recall, MEI Homes LLC, which is Ross Messon, he had offered us $1,500 today, an additional $3,500 if he does not have a house built there within a year. I think it's August 1st. And we have requirements about the size of the house and those kinds of things that are in the agreement. And so, we brought back before you that ordinance, and then the next item is the resolution to enter into that contract with Ross and have him start working on developing that lot. Again, we acquired that lot about two years ago, I think for a thousand bucks.
Any discussion needed from the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes seven zero. And now the resolution number 7353, executing a contract for sale to real estate and all necessary documents with MEI Homes LLC.
I move the resolution number 7353 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Any more discussion needed? If not, your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Okay, that moves us to the public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is anyone here for the public forum? Chris, if you could state your name and your address?
They call me Big Chris. I got two addresses, 22, 23 Court Street, and 7779 East US Highway 136 in the county.
Your last name?
Huh?
You have two names, last name?
Oh, Bill.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. This is hard to say because I'm scared to death of you guys. Really am. Tobias, I'm really scared of you too. I'd be afraid right to your face. I'm scared of you because I'm afraid you're going to kick me out of landfill. Okay? But what I'm going to say, you guys might not like what I've got to say. So, I have three, three things I want to bring up. The first one is, I talked to a few city council members, I discussed it with them about, I think every board meeting between Boswell and the work sessions should all be videotaped and audio for you guys to watch instead of going by your paperwork that's in front of you, because I don't understand paperwork. I'm not, not smart, okay? My grandpa taught me hands-on. That's the one thing that I think should be done. All right, the second thing is, I talked to a lady that's with Beatrice Public Works or bought Beatrice. Keep Beatrice beautiful, and the tire embassy was meant for the citizens of Beatrice, not the city landfill. The landfill brought in five loads of tires that we paid to get rid of, so the city of Boswell should have to pay to get rid of them or recycle them. Should not go for the residents of the city tire embassy. Tire embassy was shut down the first day. Five, five truckloads, and I talked to the landfill, and they did it with their brand-new dump truck. The next thing is, Tobias, you know this, we've talked at the work session, and me and Jason aren't going to get along. We never will. I don't care, you know, I'm scared to death of him too. I don't want to be kicked out of landfill. I want to bring the garbage to your landfill, but the Bowman Alley Trash Service, we're not bringing in as much money as we, we thought we was going to, and so I dropped down to a toter. A toter had a little bit more one time, two bags, and I was charged $75 for two bags of trash. So, Mr. Tobias, you said that, and I have it on recording with my video when we had that meeting, you said you brought sanitary garbage prices over to Mars. Okay, I dug down deep, and I went all the way down to the day that the city of Beatrice invited my family to this town to clean it up in 1975. We did not charge anything for extra pickup. We actually came to the city, this is before your time. We went and we asked if we could charge extra, and the city, and I know none of you guys was on the city board, so I'm not saying, you guys, you told my family we could not charge extra because that's the service that we gave. And so, that was false information that you brought into, yes, that meeting saying sanitary prices, because I talked to every family member about it. So, I'm going to ask you guys if I could pick up my own trash at my, my own place, like at the, out North Sixth, that gentleman had two buildings. He had his own garbage truck. He picked up his own garbage. He didn't go out shopping for garbage service, giving garbage service to people. I'm just asking for good service because I'm not getting it with Jason. Don't know what else to say. Please don't kick me out of landfill. Hey, that's all I got to say. I mean, here's, this is a bill for my electricity, so it's separate. Mars and electricity is separate. And so, if I paid, you know, if I didn't have the Mars, I still got the water and electricity and sewer. I love that stuff. I think that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the public forum? If not, we'll move on to discussion reports, city administrators' monthly report.
Yeah, all right, so a couple of things going on out there. 33rd and Lincoln Street, if everybody's seen, contractor's moving right along out there. At our construction meeting last week with the contractor, which is tough because they're constructors, right? I mean, make sure we don't get those two mixed up here. They're looking at opening up Lincoln Street to the three elementary entrances or exits by around Labor Day. The roundabout would stay closed, 33rd Street would then close. They think they've got about eight weeks worth of work there to get those things done before they would go back over to in front of Christ Community Church and do that last little bit on the far western portion of that project. So, they're moving right along. If you do, get the calculator out and start counting days there. I mean, they're looking to be done by Christmas, so that project is moving along very well. The school sites, we've retained JEO. I think the last meeting or two, you guys retained JEO to do the engineering services. We've had a kickoff meeting with them, so they're getting their survey crew down here to start looking at those sites, talk to the school, let them know that they'll be running around.
They're there today.
Were they there today?
Yep.
At the same time, we're working on asbestos removal, and so there's a grant out there. One of the requirements is we have to go get some bids, and so the school had had a asbestos survey done. We're now sending that off to contractors and trying to get some pricing. The school's been great to work with, given us some contact information so we can get people into the buildings to look at it to make sure that what asbestos needs to be removed, that kind of stuff. So, we are working through those issues. The Raze Grant, we had a meeting today with NDOT. As we've talked about, NDOT is going to take over that particular grant application and start working with things. The first thing that they are going to do is send us down an RFP, Request for Proposals, so we can go out and procure for engineering services. If we do it ourselves, we have to get the process blessed by the Federal Highway Department, and it's much faster if we turn this over and run it through NDOT. It will run through there like all of our other grant projects that we've done, the big trail projects. So, they'll help us out there. NDOT will pay all the consultants directly, so they'll bill NDOT, NDOT will bill, pay them, and then they'll get reimbursements from the feds is how that will flow through. What's that?
Terry.
Oh.
I was talking to Terry.
So, NDOT will then also help us with any right-of-way acquisition, and they'll line up and take care of those things. One question I did ask was, does the city lose control? She said absolutely not. This is your project. You can be as involved or uninvolved as you want to be. She goes, it's yours. We will make sure that you guys are there every step of the way, so.
And the engineering costs, is that part of the grant then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as part of that $21 million, we had engineering in there.
Okay.
So, I sent her off the application so she could put together the RFP and start helping us go through those things. The last thing I was going to bring up was LB 34. I think some of you sat in that telephone conference today. For those of you who don't know what LB 34 is, right, there's a special session. The whole idea was to have some property tax relief. LB 34, I think, is what survived, is, I don't know if that's the right term, but that's what's left sitting on, on the legislative floor up there right now. We'll see what tomorrow brings, but in essence, the way it's written right now is you have to do a very big math formula to try to figure out how much we can or cannot raise property taxes going forward. I will tell you that I read it one way, and Hannah read it a completely different way, and our numbers were significantly different at the end of that math formula as to which way you read commas and spaces and those kinds of things, so there's a lot of stuff that has to be kind of hammered out in there. But in essence, what it does is kind of look at what you levied prior years. You get a growth rate. We get a growth rate today. You then look at multiplying that by the greater of zero, right? Anybody knows math, right? If you multiply it by zero, you get zero. Or it's an inflation rate, but the inflation rate is not the CPI or anything like that. Instead, it is a state and local consumption expenditures and gross investment index, right? It does exist. I found it today. So, you then have to kind of factor that in there. There are a number of exemptions that they are allowing. Public safety was a big one that was in there, so those then would be exempt out. Bonds are exempt out, some of those types of things. If it, if it goes into effect, it would start for any fiscal year starting after July 1st of 2025. Well, that would be the school, and that would be the county. They start July 1st, and then we obviously start October 1st. So, we'd have this last year, the budget that we'll bring up here in the next couple weeks, under the old rules before we flip over to the new rules, which would go into place for the next round of budgets. We'll see what tomorrow brings. We'll see how things kind of progress throughout the day, but the biggest issue is out there is that 0%. If they, if there's a year that you could have zero, and looking through there, there were times when that index was zero. The last time was 2020. It actually went negative through there. There are times when the city's growth rate has been zero or negative, and so you start factoring those in there, negative multiplying in a multiplication issue, you end up with having years where maybe you just don't grow or can't grow, which would really impact if you have bond indebtedness, right? If you still have to make those bond payments and you don't have the ability to raise rates to get those bond payments, that's when it could really impact you. Knock on wood, right now, we don't have bond issuance that's tied to our property taxes, but doesn't mean that we won't ever have that. So, we'll keep you informed, let you know how tomorrow goes.
Have you talked to Myron? What's his opinion of this?
You know, we've had some good conversations with Myron in his office. I don't know where he stands on the current bill. I don't, I don't know that.
I talked to him too, and I got the same, it's just like too much right now. It just is. But I also got that there's a, it's, it's not in there, but there's a TIF exemption, and there's also a bond exemption or emergency exemption, just a lot of stuff on the table yet on all that.
Yes, they did try to make sure they put some language in here that doesn't impact TIF. They tried to put some language in there about, you know, existing TIF projects, new TIF projects. Again, I mean, your TIF projects are tied to your property tax request, and if property tax requests have to be lowered during future years, it just generates less TIF revenue in those years, and so, I mean, it happens today, right? TIF projects that occurred during Beatrice 6 pay off different than after Beatrice 6 because the county lowered their levy. I mean, so it happens today. We just have to make sure you understand the math and how to work through those.
So, I tried to wade through the 44-page thing that Lynn Rex sent out, and I struggled with it. You and I had this conversation before the meeting started, but one of the things I never got at it, and I, and I tried to follow Tom Brandt's proposal and, you know, Proposal 2, Proposal 9, Proposal 34, and, and the one thing that I didn't garner out of any of that is growth by, if you're, if you're actually moving your city limits, if you're annexing property. Let's say that our piece that we just purchased in the industrial park, you know, if that had, actually had structure on it, I mean, it, I couldn't find anywhere that allowed for that.
So, the growth, the definition of growth value is increase in the city's valuation, which includes things such as annexation. So, it is in the growth value, then you use that as part of the formula to calculate your growth rate, your growth percentage, which then goes into the how much you can or cannot raise taxes in the future years. So, it is in there.
Yep.
Couldn't find it.
It's only 44 pages, man.
Well, it's so many numbers. Did you read it?
Yeah, just as a matter of fact, I did flip through it.
Yeah.
And listened to the whole hour and a half of conversation.
Any other questions, comments?
Are we just on the city administrator's report or that thing?
We're on the city administrator's report.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a couple of quick things, just so all the neighbors in that area know, on 13th and Oak, okay, and Beaver, the rest of the sodding will be done this week, and the west side of the street will be, grass will be put in that thing before the end of September when they think it's the right time to do it, and that project will be done, okay?
Now, just so we're clear, the west side gets seeded.
Yes, not sodded, I'm sorry.
Nope, I just, you said grass can be put in there, so I should have understood that-
Grass seed. Second thing, I think the asphalt going around town looks great, I do, and third, I'm going to, I'm going to steal this, I hope you don't mind this, I think we talked about this, Tobias, but I just want to read this because I want to make sure everybody, I just thought this was very impressive. Grants. Since 2021, we have secured over $33 million in grants from state and federal departments and private foundations. We currently have applications pending for an additional 3.9 million. Our matching funds for the $33 million that we receive in grants funds is $1.6 million. That's a pretty good return on our money, I think, and congratulations to you guys for doing, I know, a big one was here lately, no question about it, but there's a lot of years, there's three years worth of work there that they weren't involved with, so thank you for your work you guys did on that.
Thank you.
You know, I think the thing to go along with that is around, probably December, January, we will certainly do some evaluation of Merchant McIntyre.
Yep.
But I think, you know, we all talk about the Raze Grant, but at the end of the day, there's other grants that they've gotten us as well, and so that will be an interesting evaluation because there's no question that group in Washington, DC has certainly helped us in a lot of ways, so.
Yep.
Boot for thought. Anything else? If not, Mr. McLean?
I move the meeting be adjourned at 7:29 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. Passes seven zero. Passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Next meeting will be September 3rd.